We have one item on the agenda, and that is tenant protections and rental registration program updates. And take it away, MJ.
Good Council President and Council members. I'm here today with Hannah Bonmiller on behalf of EHHS. And today is a follow-up to a question that was posed by Council with questions surrounding tenant protections. But Hannah also had the brilliant idea to also provide context and information on our rental registration program. We felt that dovetailed well with the conversation. So with that said, I'll hand it over to Hannah, and we'll kind of co-tag team this.
Thank you, Mary Jane, and good evening, Council members. For the record, Hannah Bonmiller, I'm the Acting Community Development and Housing Manager in EHHS, and very happy to be with you this evening to give this presentation in response to the motion that was directed by Council to staff in February. So the presentation this evening will start by providing information on local need. This was something that was asked for and identified as part of Council's February motion. Second, MJ and I will overview the existing programs, policies, and strategies that are already in place. And then Section 3, we will overview what we've identified as near, midterm, and longer-term strategies for Council's consideration. And lastly, we want to save time for questions. So the motion that we staff received from Council was to look at gaps and needs related to renters in Renton. And in response, staff analyzed data related to renter households, the Renton rental market, and evictions in Renton. Time limitations prevent us from covering the entirety of our analysis on renter needs and the rental market, but we did select some following information to present a high-level picture of notable trends. Overall, we are seeing that Renton is becoming a more rental-oriented community, and that renters are increasingly facing affordability challenges. But before I jump into some data, I do want to add my data caveat, which is that understanding our rental community with data is a little bit like painting a portrait. You have to blend the colors together, you have to lay them on top of each other, sometimes you have to squint with one eye, and then you have to take all of these pieces and make it into a holistic picture that is really just a snapshot in time. So this information, while holistic is cursory, and we welcome and appreciate any additional direction to look at or report on data needs or different conditions. So we want to speak at a high level to renter households, rent prices, and evictions in the city. And to start, we want to frame the context around Renton's rental community. A key narrative that we saw in the data is that Renton is becoming a more rental-oriented community. Population growth in the last decade was largely from renter households. That was a pop, excuse me, approximately 70% of new population growth was renters. So between 2010 and 2021, our renter population growth outpaced owners by about three times. And our development pipeline can also give us a sense of what we can predict in terms of future population growth by tenure. In CED's current development pipeline, about 92% of housing units are identified as rental housing, and most of that is market rate. So we are seeing more renters in our community, but I also want to touch on some of the changing socioeconomic statuses we're also seeing. In the data, looking at income and education, we see that our new renters are most likely to be the most educated households and more than likely making at or above area median income. And so I think this is important. We still have renters across the spectrum. We have renters with different needs, but when we are talking about these issues, we're not exclusively talking about low-income households or even below median income households. So one of the reasons you may, we may be seeing more higher-income renters in Renton is because our rents are increasing. Historically, rents in Renton have been cheaper than our neighbors to the south. We've been historically seen as a more affordable community, but that is changing. We do see that the post-pandemic prices in Renton and South King County are increasing at rates faster than Seattle and Bellevue. And in the last year or so, rents in Renton have become on par with Seattle. The graph on the slide shows rent trends for our peer cities between 2015 and 2023. And in that period of time, asking rents in Renton increased by about $800, or nearly 60%. And comparatively, rents in Seattle increased at $566, or about 35%. So within our community, we're seeing that these housing cost increases are not keeping pace, or excuse, are outpacing inflation and income increases. Because of data time legs, we don't have equivalent timeframes for these data sources. You can see the income data ends at 2021, while we have home price data that goes to 2023. But you can see kind of the trends within that chart. Rent and rents have increased by about 60% in this time period, while between 2015 and 2021, renter incomes have only increased by 45%. So staff anticipate that the renter income will continue to stay a leg behind the overall rent increases for that 2021-2023 period, just given the high increases in rent prices during that time. This has also impacted households' ability to pay rent. Data shows that in 2010, about 45% of our renter households were cost-burdened or paying more than 30% of their income on rent. And in 2021, that was 60% of our renter households. So that, this represents an additional 5,200 cost-burdened renters in Renton since 2010.
Let me add, to add a few other caveats, so data can be interpreted in different ways. When we looked at the pipeline of rental units that are coming through, in addition to that many units coming through the system, CED is also anticipating 10,000 new jobs that are going to come with these apartments in terms of our rental units. It's in response to that. They're also anticipating 17,000, almost, new residents into the city. So it's not necessarily in response, but it's to project an anticipated influx in our population, but 10 jobs that will be coming with it as well. So we didn't want to leave out some of these holistic information. And also, you know, in terms of the data about the 92%, it's different schools of thought in terms of how you want to consume and process it. Some people will interpret that more units will make the older ones more affordable, and the higher market rate will go to the newer development as well. So there's so many subtle nuances and caveats that we just want to kind of insert in there as we have this conversation.
Thank you, MJ. So staff's follow-up, we also followed up with some public comments that Council had received at the time that the motion was made from the King County Bar Association Attorney Staff. We reached out and were able to obtain and analyze eviction filing data that the King County Bar Association's Housing Justice Project collects. Their data was shared for annual periods of April through March. And so although the columns there list two years, it is a 12-month period, just spanning two calendar years. The data that we obtained was for the number of filings by year for all King County jurisdictions, as well as for within Renton, the basis or reason for eviction by year. So as you can see on the table on the screen, the King County Bar Association reported 535 eviction filings in Renton between April 2019 and March 2023. And the chart breaks this down by basis for the eviction, and also the total number of filings per year. In between 2020 and 2022, those two center columns, you can see the real impact of the COVID-19 emergency protections. Those are very odd and not normal years. When we want to look at more normal trends, I would direct you to look at the 2019 to 2020 column, or the 2022 to 2023 column. And for those normal years and across the total, the predominant reason for filing is non-payment of rent. This is approximately 70% of the eviction filings. Other top causes include lease violations, owners wishing to sell or occupy, or some of the other causes listed on the screen. But overall, it's really predominantly related to the non-payment of rent. And I'll touch on this in a forthcoming slide, but note that these are eviction filings that were filed in court. We don't have data on other types of termination. So if a rental agreement was terminated in a different way or did not reach that court process, that was not able to be documented in this dataset. So moving on to looking at eviction filings by city, this chart breaks, shows the top-ranked cities in terms of eviction filings per capita. So we calculated that figure based on the 2022 to 2023 eviction filing data that we collected, and the 2023 OFM population estimates. So in terms of eviction filings per capita, Renton ranks 10th of 35 cities. And overall, we were pretty on par with where we should be in terms of a population proportionate amount for the county. We make up about 5% of the county's population, and in 2022-2023, we reported about 6% of the county's eviction filings. So we want to move on to a portion of the presentation where we review some of the policies, programs, and resources that are already in place, that are related to tenant protections and healthy housing. This is especially important in this conversation because there are different levels of authority as it relates, especially to tenant protections. And as you may know, the state plays a key role. So we want to focus on three buckets in this conversation, starting with statewide protections. We'll also touch on the human services funding and how we support organizations that provide tenant services to Renton residents. And then lastly, we'll talk about the city's existing rental registration program and provide an update on to its operations. So statewide protections, state law is the foundation of landlord-tenant interactions, mostly embodied in the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act. This is within the Revised Code of Washington, 5918. The Residential Landlord-Tenant Act regulates the creation of residential tenancies and the relationship between landlords and tenants. It establishes rights and duties for both landlords and tenants, and outlines procedures for parties to enforce their rights. It outlines how tenancies can be expired or ended, and it also outlines remedies for both landlords and tenants. So a couple of key, if you ever pull up the RCW, the Landlord-Tenant Act is fairly lengthy with a lot of rules and procedures in it, and I will not pretend that this will cover even a portion of it. So really trying to keep it at a high level, and would be happy to take further questions and get back to you. So a couple of key points about the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act. As mentioned, this is a, an act that outlines both tenant and landlord responsibility, rights, and remedies. There are civil remedies that a tenant can follow if a landlord doesn't make repairs that they're responsible for in a timeframe. There are procedures for landlords to evict a tenant if they are not complying with the lease or failure to pay rent. Those are outlined within the act. But a key point is that these are, these are civil actions, excuse me. So these are civil, sometimes court processes. These are not something the state enforces. You can't call up the Attorney General and ask for them to enforce a portion of the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act. And it's also not something that cities enforce. The remedies that are outlined in there are usually through a civil lawsuit process that may end up in court. So third, I want to point out that when we talk about evictions in terms of the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act, we are talking about a formal civil lawsuit process that may end up in court. We'll overview what that looks like, but folks often conflate termination of tenancies with evictions, and just identifying that evictions is a formal process that is outlined. And then finally, the state does make and consider changes to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act frequently. This last year, there wasn't any major changes. There were some amendments related to the return of security deposits and how normal, where, and terror is defined. But, so nothing major, but this is something that frequently comes up in front of the state legislature that they consider and act on at a statewide level.
I think a thing to note here is we've had people question before rent control, and why can't that just be put in place? And as we were researching, and I had my personal learning curve, is the state does not, the state would dictate that. So in the state of New York, they have some of the oldest rent control and tenant protection laws, and so that's why. And so our state does not do that. So we could never supersede that as a city jurisdiction.
So I did want to take a moment in the discussion to just overview what an eviction process looks like at a high level. As I mentioned, evictions and terminations are often conflated, but they are different things. Evictions are the formal lawsuit process that might end up in court, and landlords are required to follow certain procedures and timelines to initiate that process, including giving tenants notice. So the process outlined on the screen is a hypothetical example timeline of an eviction for unpaid rent. It assumes that the landlord is moving through the eviction process as fast as the law allows. Not all evictions go this fast. I would say very unlikely that any do, and obviously not all of them proceed this far. So before the eviction process can be initiated, the landlord must serve a tenant a notice stating the reason of the eviction. There are three really common type of notices that we see: either a 14-day pay or vacate, a 10-day notice to comply with the lease, or a three-day notice for waste or nuisance. And these notices indicate to the tenant that the landlord is going to serve them an unlawful detainer action against them, and if they don't respond within the timeframe. So on the timeline, the eviction note, you can see that the eviction notice must be served properly, and then the tenants have, must have failed to comply within the specified timeframe. In this case, they had 14 days to pay their rent. If they did not pay their rent, the landlord then can serve them with an unlawful detainer, also known as an eviction summons and complaint. That's Box 4 or Day 16 on the slide. After that summons and complaint is served, the tenant has seven days to answer, or they lose by default. If the tenant has responded, both parties go to court. If there was no response, then a default judgment and a writ of restitution is issued. The writ can be served by the King County Sheriffs and can be enforced after 72 hours. So one of the things that I wanted to note as you read through the process is nowhere on here do you see the city of Renton. There are things that the landlord is supposed to do, the things that the tenant should do, but ultimately, this is heard in the King County Superior Court and enforced by the Sheriff's Department. And as MJ alluded to, there are a number of state policies on the books that apply to the city of Renton. There are a number listed on this screen, including rules around notice of rent increases, requiring landlords to accept the payment of deposits and installments, prohibiting landlords from discriminating based on source of income, and also, as MJ mentioned, prohibiting cities from enacting rent control. So I outline these not only because it's important for us as city staff to understand as we're looking through our options and how we act locally, and for you all to consider in this issue, but it's also important knowledge for landlords and tenants, and one of the things that we'll discuss in terms of our considerations for next steps. So I'm going to pass it over to MJ at this time to talk about our human services funding.
Thank you, Council. So as you know, we funded 64 organizations, and not without thought of our rental community, or just those in crisis and need. So 64 programs, we're going to show you in a second which specific ones are supporting that, but also a huge portion of our COVID relief dollars, CARES, ARPA, and C2BG-CV funds. 1.3 million exactly went to rental assistance, and even then, we weren't able to quite get all of it out. And that was more of just a bandwidth issue of the nonprofits that were responsible for dismissing, sorry, dispensing out these funds, and also became a bit more challenging as time went on to tie it back to COVID. But that is where the bulk of that relief was needed, and it went. These currently are the service providers through human services that are assisting our rental emergency assistance. As you can see, the nonprofits there. We also do fund legal assistance, not specifically just for rental, but we fund them for low income and for improved access. And then as well as navigation, we want to make sure folks also have options and information as they're just simply trying to walk through these different And then now we're going to transition. That was just to show that, separate from tenant protections, separate from the rental registration program, that's the portion that human services is doing to support things that kind of fall between the cracks or may not be specific to that, but they do need assistance still with rental assistance or anything that supports housing stability. And then Hannah's going to, we're going to start talking now about our rental registration program.
Thanks, MJ. So this conversation was a good opportunity for us to slide in the rental registration program as an update. I think this is a great opportunity because I think at least some of you were not on council when this program was adopted in, way back in 2019. So at a high level, the rental registration program, it's a health and safety program that's focused on the long-term health and safety of our residential rental units. It is a registration-based program. It aims for voluntary compliance of landlords through the completion of an annual self-certification process. The rental registration program doesn't have new standards for landlords, but it's really about compliance with the rules that are already in place. We're looking to get rental units in compliance with our existing building and property standards. Nothing new. So our program does prioritize voluntary compliance. We ask for a self-certification, but we also do have avenues for pursuing suspected violations. In those cases, we can issue a request for landlords to obtain an inspection by an outside, non-city inspector and have that submitted to the city. This allows us to get a non-biased report on the conditions of units that have suspected violations, and then if needed, pursue further actions for compliance. Ultimately, the violations and penalties follow our existing remedies and penalties outlined in Title I, Chapter 3. So that is what the program is. A couple of things about the program is not, this is not a general landlord-tenant program. So as MJ mentioned, we fund organizations that will provide legal assistance, that will help folks navigate different resources. That is not this program. So we are not getting involved with landlord-tenant disputes. We can document reports, we can give out information, we can help seek compliance with the city requirements, but we don't give legal advice or enforce issues outside the rental registrations program purview. It's really about healthy and safe housing that complies with the city codes. This is also not an inspection program. There are different models that cities adopt for these types of programs, and ours has intentionally been a registration-based program. We'll see shortly that this program has had a long history of development, and the intentional choice was to go with a registration-based program rather than doing inspection-based. Inspection-based programs require landlords to not only register, but every, usually three years or so, they are, will need to go out and get that third-party inspection and submit it to the city, regardless if there's a suspected violation or not. This is currently not a requirement of our program. So that's a little bit about the goals and structure of the program, and now I want to speak a little bit to its development and where we are now. As mentioned, this has been in the works for quite a while. It actually began as a CED docket item in 2015, and was ultimately adopted in code in February 2019. Staff for the program was hired on in early 2020 to implement the program, and then very quickly after, implementation was paused due to changing COVID-19 environment and the protections that were being placed on landlords and tenants. After a year, staff piloted the program in April 2021, and at the time of that pilot implementation, identified a number of program inefficiencies and barriers. In particular, the requirement for landlords to obtain a business license was identified as burdensome to getting compliance and ultimately getting folks into the program. So for the rest of 2021, staff advanced code changes to improve program usability. We removed the requirement for landlords to obtain a business license, and we also created an online registration system to improve customer ease. Those changes were functional at the end of 2021, and the program has an operational sense. So at a high level, the program can be understood as operational, but it has not yet been fully implemented. Landlords can go online and register and annually renew for free, but we've not yet done a mass notification to the city's 15,000 rental properties. We currently have about 1,000 landlords registered and have a tentative implementation plan for, to start doing the mass notifications once we have full staff. In the interim, we do respond to tenant and resident reports. Our code-compliance staff are amazing in helping to respond to those issues, and our registration staff are still working to register priority properties that code-compliance is identifying. So if they have some problem properties that we want to get into the program. Also, our utility billing division staff is helping direct landlords into the program as part of the completion of their alternate tenant utility billing form. So we are operational, not yet fully implemented, and we're hoping to continue to move forward implementation as capacity allows.
And President?
Yes.
Thank you. Hannah, so when do you expect that you all will be able to fully implement it? I know you said it was hiring-dependent. When do you think that's going to happen?
Hannah's currently in an acting position, as she stated. Her prior position is vacant, and that position was dedicated to the rental registration program. So we have some temporary fixes to offset that, and that was just kind of a residual outlier from the reorg and the new development of EHHS. So we're hoping to provide clarity soon on housing and be able to backfill her position. Code, it looks like they're making ways in terms of becoming fully staffed, so they're not too far off for themselves. And then we're working with finance right now, so don't have an exact ETA, but we're working as fast as we can. I think EHHS might be a bit of the holdup right now with not having a dedicated person to the program, but that's most of it, sir.
Thank you so much.
So I want to move on now to kind of the meat of this discussion, which is putting forward local actions for Council to consider. We divided these into what we see as near, midterm, and longer-term actions. We categorize near-term actions as things that staff saw as low-hanging fruit that build on what we already have in place. The longer-term actions, we think, would require additional analysis, engagement, or policy development. This is definitely not an all-encompassing list, but reflects what we see as internal opportunities. And then we also did try to capture the range of adopted policies in King County jurisdictions. So outlined on this slide are strategies to consider. The near-term strategies include education and outreach, improving the rental registration program, and advancing tenant protection policies to skip. Midterm considerations are adopting policies related to requiring the distribution of information to tenants. Longer-term options to consider are other policies that have been adopted in King County, and we'll review the full breadth of those in a moment. And, sorry, just going back for one second, all of these are not mutually exclusive. These are things to consider. There are also things that we have local discretion over as we review other jurisdictions in King County. All of them have considered what makes sense for them in terms of extent, and have tailored their local policies based on that. And so just a consideration that any of these things that we would want to advance, we would want to consider that for Renton as well. So in terms of low-hanging fruit, and being able to build on what we have in place, the first consideration is really just building out our education and outreach. This would involve developing and implementing a program of education and informational events. This could be creating packets on how to read the Landlord-Tenant Act, or important requirements to know that exists in there.
What? Can we tell them, Mark? So we were, we were talking about, you know, how much teeth does education have? And it does. And we were discussing, think about it when you go to the doctor's office, and it gives you a pamphlet about your HIPAA rights, or when you're signing on to a software or a web program, and it reminds you about your privacy. It's really about continually educating and reminding everyone It's really about continually educating and reminding everyone what their position is, what their rights are, what their access is. But we were thinking of even making sure that it has it for the landlords as well as the tenants. We realized for the smaller mom-and-pops that have one unit or is, you know, mother-in-law quarters, there's a huge education opportunity there for them in terms of understanding what it is they're about to embark on in terms of the legality rights of the tenants as well. So that was the examples. It may seem mild, but there is a lot of impact around education. And so that's what we were thinking of in terms of providing some sort of packet. And then I'll speak to quickly is the increased outreach to the tenants through the neighborhood program. We had discussed about evolving the neighborhood program. Nearly 50% of the community are renters, and what are we doing to engage them? This will help establish a rapport and not just when there's crisis or uncomfortable or challenging situations. We're still working that out through finance and legal right now on how that program can replicate, but we're vetting out what we can do regardless of kind of that grant portion of the neighborhood program, which is where it's kind of sticky right now. So that's where we were at is how to engage that portion of our community.
Yeah, and just building off of that, one of the things that we heard from our peer jurisdictions that have either adopted local policies or are considering it is that doing engagement and outreach prior to moving policies forward is a best practice. Having these conversations with landlords and tenants in the community prior helps us understand what's going on, what are the needs, local conditions, and then we can adapt our policies locally in response to that. So using the neighborhood program and/or these educational opportunities to increase our connection to these communities, I think will ultimately make any future actions more locally contextualized as well. And just adding on to what MJ said, that education, it may seem kind of basic, but it really is a high-value action because there is already a lot in place when it comes to state law and local resources for legal assistance, rental assistance. So where we can give the public better connection, knowledge of, and being able to utilize these existing resources, I think is a win for everyone. The second near-term strategy to consider is potential improvements to the rental registration program. As we talked about, our program is registration-based and does not require these periodic inspections unless you're suspected of a violation. But our code-compliance and rental registration staff do believe that there are benefits to considering and implementing the periodic inspection requirements for landlords, especially of larger properties like duplex and larger size. One of the benefits that we see is being able to separate the inspection requests from tenant reports. So right now, we do have a more reactive program, and so we are having cases where we're getting more into the middle of tenant landlord disputes because we're becoming aware of issues from tenants. And ultimately, we do think that these periodic inspections, because they give you regular insight into the properties, would result in better compliance of rental properties. So for the last near-term action we wanted to identify is advancing tenant protection policies to skip. Skip is the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. It's the South King County Subregional Housing Coalition. And we included skip in this recommendation because when the motion from council was made, a reference was made to Arch's executive board recommendation for their member cities to adopt certain tenant protection policies. So Arch, a regional coalition for housing, it's the East Side's housing coalition. And their executive board in 2022 did adopt a recommendation for their member cities to consider adopting three specific tenant protection policies. So the Arch Executive Board saw the benefit of those policies to the east side. A near-term consideration is to advance a similar item to skip, and through their executive board, on which Councilmember McIrvin sits, that body can consider and recommend tenant protections that they see of mutual benefit to South King County. For mid- and longer-term actions, these are policy options that we're putting forward. Suggested as a midterm action is a policy requiring the distribution of information to tenants. This is really building on the education component and making it a requirement of landlords to share information with tenants at certain points in that relationship, usually at the time a lease is signed. So as MJ said, you go into the doctor's office, you get your packet of information about your HIPAA rights. You might read it, you might not, but you have it there to reference in the future. And that is kind of the thought behind distribution of information. It would require landlords to provide this information to tenants about rental rules, regulations, and resources. And this was something that was considered and recommended as part of the City of Renton's housing action plan that was adopted in 2021. There are additional local policies that have been adopted in King County. And so, excuse me. There on the screen, you can see listed the three Arch recommendations that were put forward, and these were related to notice of rent increases, limits on late fees, and limits on move-in fees. And you'll note that these are, at least number one and number three are policies that build on or exceed state requirements. So there are our existing state policies on the notice of rent increase. Some eastside jurisdictions opted to exceed those state requirements and adopt local provisions. And so...
I'll chime in for a second.
Thank you.
If you go back to Slide eight, when you go back to look at this whole presentation, you can see some of the Arch recommendations in how they correlate to the cities and their evictions. So depending on the cities and the types of evictions or the percentage, they went ahead and did certain things to address that issue. So it'll tell you, again, back up to number, and then Slide seven prior, it tells you the basis of eviction. So, you know, the basis of evictions and the percent per capita, looking at the state law, equates to those recommendations by skip and then those by Arch. So that's how those connect and just kind of in terms of context to those recommendations.
So I just want to move to this final slide, which is a more holistic capture of the policies that we were able to identify that have been adopted by King County jurisdictions. We included the policy in a description. We also kind of bucketed these into different categories. So the first bucket are policies related to education and accommodations. The second bucket is policies related to rent and fees. And then the third bucket is policies related to changing tenancy or ownership. So at least one King County jurisdiction has adopted each of these policies. And as I mentioned, that they do vary by locality because of the local policy discretion. Not every jurisdiction has the same policy language or even the same requirements in there. Our peer jurisdictions locally tailor these policies and packages when they adopt them. And so that concludes the information that we would like to share this evening and are happily available for any questions.
Oh, yes, please.
Probably have a few questions, but I'll try and summon every... I guess what I'm wondering is, and I'm looking at specifically the longer-term actions, is this more or less a kind of a recap of what you found? Or where in this is the potential suggestion of what we do? There are a few of the longer-term actions that I have questions on, and where are we at in this process? And we were saying, hey, do we want to send all this and say we're on board with all this stuff, or what?
For us, it wanted, we wanted to give context to where the state fits in, the county, as well as ourselves. What we wanted to provide is the, you know, there are options. They just would be long-term ones in order for us to understand what is going to suit the city best in our particular market. We just didn't want to leave council without options or awareness of what other jurisdictions are doing at the moment. We wanted to give context where we need and have areas for improvement and opportunity improvement. We definitely are aware that there's a lot we can be doing with our own rental registration, and we could be a bigger part of a solution. And so it was more for context in for council's consideration on just digesting this information, hearing what they hear from community. And we have representatives for community behind us as well that we appreciate being here. It was just to begin the process of the conversation is, you know, these are options for consideration, short-term, mid-term, and obviously longer-term because they do take a bit more thought instantly. Like you have questions, we would as well as the teams respectively to be implementing these things. We just wanted to give a variety of options and context to council.
Clean this up for future discussion.
Yes, sir.
So in order of those who have not spoken first, Councilmember Vaughn, then Rivera, and then Mr. Prince, and then Mr. McIrvin.
A little FOMO going on there.
Question per. Okay, I have a few, but I'll just go with one first. Thank you so much for your presentation and educating us with this topic. I, you know, we mentioned some of the reasons of folks getting evicted. Through your research, because I know that with some of the clinics or the representation that the bar association provides, then it's usually at the eviction time, right? But through, if you've done any research, that it comes to mind in terms of issues like retaliations or... Because what I'm getting at is that there's like this known factor, and there's other factors that we just don't know. And maybe through your research, you might know that because that really is that whole constructive eviction process that a lot of us don't know about, that lots of our tenants are actually under that situation, ones I've talked to. So just kind of curious if that is something that came up through your research.
That's a great question, and I think you're identifying a big gap in our knowledge in being able to get data on what happens when things are terminated before that eviction filing. There are a lot of cases where tenants may not even know that there is a required process to go through for an eviction. So they might just, you know, receive a 14-day peer vacate and, you know, pack up and move out. We would, I could go note this for further research and see if we're able to identify more information for you to bring back for future discussion.
That's actually gonna be, excuse me, I'm gonna be building off of that a little bit. So thank you, one, for an incredibly informative presentation. I'm a little overwhelmed with the information, but I'm absorbing it, and I'm really grateful. So I might email you after with more questions. And I was more particularly interested in some of the information regarding the cost burden. And so from what I'm understanding about, did I hear this correctly? About 60% of renters are cost burden in the City of Renton? And they make up almost half of our city. So that's significant population. And our eviction rate is about a percentage higher than the county's eviction filing rate? Is that what I'm hearing? It's about 5%? You said we're at 6%?
So that is where we would expect Renton to be in terms of, we are 5% of the county population, and we represent 6% of the county's eviction filings. So it's just comparing what we would expect for rent and given a population proportion at share.
That makes sense. So then where I'm getting at with this is in terms of income, cost burden. Obviously, those who are the most marginalized are those who are the most impoverished and are the lowest income. And building off of like retaliation, let's say you do, you call the rental registration program. You say, my landlord, you know, isn't taking care of like the most basic things. What happens, you know, if, again, the landlord who I'm gonna presume has more money, has more means, has more experience, wants to, as Councilmember Van just stated, do what is called a constructively eviction in retaliation? And with a lack of information and understanding, I guess what I want to understand is how can we do better by those as our population continues to increase, as housing becomes more of a crisis? As we're seeing our houses' population continue to increase, how can we protect those who are most impoverished? Like what can we do as a council for those Renton renters?
In terms of us getting a context and a handle, I think that's why we were referencing some of those human services. But human services and in terms of those that are marginalized, there's a whole strata above that that does not fall into that income criteria of the definition of poverty, where a lot of the criteria is required for some of these lower economic. There's a lot of it is sometimes working individuals who just don't have the savings or safety net. It takes sometimes your car breaking down. It takes a medical bill. It takes things like that. We certainly have been having conversations of how do we evolve human services to have an additional layer, an additional safety net? There's this whole working community. Again, sometimes it could be dual income. It's not exclusively to poverty, although it is most probably disproportionately impactful in those circumstances. We are just getting a context and a handle on that demographic and that geographic space, and who are these people being impacted by it? Again, I think we do have a bigger role and an opportunity to improve our rental registration program, educate, and empower. We're still on a learning curve as well, kind of coming to that realization that the rental market is so huge and that development has been wonderful for the city and the new jobs coming in. But what does it mean to improve or expand upon programs? To have that relationship, that rapport, and that communication? So those are very big questions you asked and very complicated. And unfortunately, we don't have just straightforward answers. This is really that opportunity to begin the conversation and, you know, take on the ambition and vision that council and the mayor sets forth.
Which I really appreciate. Thank you, MJ.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So my question, well, first of all, thank you for an incredibly informative presentation. Love all the data that's in here, and I'm sure there's plenty more to unpack outside of that. I have a comment and then a question. The comments certainly would just be that what I'm gathering from the presentation, the crux of it is increasing participation in compliance in our rental registration program will be the key to pretty much everything else that might follow from that is what at least I'm taking away from that. Because if I did the math right, we're about 7% compliance right now in terms of getting folks connected, or even if we were to adopting these, to have any teeth to them, it feels like that might be a little bit more of a hammer we might want to have to be able to bring down. So for me, that seems to be upfront, the top-stated goal that we'd want to do, and certainly understand why we are where we are, given all the circumstances of where we came to. But I'd certainly want to enable HSS to have every tool in order to bring that level up as quickly as we can. The question I had with respect to the forwarding the recommendations to skip, which I think is a great idea, and totally support, and I'm happy to do that as Renton's representative there. Do we know with Arch, just for comparative purposes, how many member cities had similar policies in place prior to that resolution being adopted? The reason I'm asking is I'm thinking, okay, going to the board and saying, hey, you should adopt these. Oh, by the way, Renton hasn't done it yet. That feels a little bit backwards versus being able to say, hey, we've done this. And I get the why again. I think the cell's really easy because you look at the numbers for South King County on the eviction rates. That slide you called out a second time, and it is really telling. It makes sense. This is where skip should be. But I just want to make sure going there, we're ready for that, I guess.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. So prior to Arch's executive board, my understanding is that none of their member jurisdictions have these types of policies in place. And since that time, four have adopted at least one of those policies on the books. In terms of South King County, we do have many skip, at least two skip members who have fairly robust tenant protection policies. And so those would be great jurisdictions for us to learn from, understand how they're working in their community. So although it's not something we necessarily have in Renton, it is something that has been discussed and moved forward in South King County, and I think there may be some momentum for that discussion at skip.
Councilmember Prince.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Madam President. I want to go back to the last slide, the longer-term actions. I think for me, and I'll only speak for me and not my colleagues, it'd be helpful if we had a matrix of what cities have done what with these actions so that we can, you know, if you don't know where you're going, any road to get you there. So to me, if we find out, you know, like due date adjustments, just for example, what cities have done that, it seems like it'd be very helpful, at least for me, to know what cities have done what on this list. Thank you.
I have a question. If I remember correctly, the whole business permit process was considered as one way or maybe the only way that the city actually had some leverage in the case of landlords violating... in the case of landlords violating tenants' rights in the power to revoke their business license. So if we're no longer, if we're not doing the business license part of it, where do we see our leverage?
Thank you, Councilmember. So although that is not a requirement of the program at this time, there are still penalties and violations for failure to register, false reporting on a declaration of compliance and failure to come in compliance with the program's requests. And so there are still avenues that would ultimately follow what is very similar to our code compliance process that could ultimately end with a criminal case for that to, as a enforcement measure for landlords to be in compliance with the program.
And we would be bringing the case?
Yes, I would go through our code enforcement, correct?
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go back around again. Councilmember Vaughn had another follow-up?
Yes, Councilmember Prince kind of took the question, but just data comparison to other cities and any other factors, not necessarily through the Arch program. Because I know that appearing in CTEC has been more recently, but there are still lawsuits in process, right? I think in my recollection, but just kind of that, not just the Arch factors, but a broader and comparative to other cities and within the King County. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We also know, I believe it was CTEC that had an open house for both tenants and landlords. So we certainly can reach out to them and ask kind of what that experience was and what was the outcome.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is really fantastic and I have a lot of great information. So I followed the 2019 kind of rental registration stuff that was going on. And I have to say, I'm a little disappointed. It seems like a lot of teeths were taken out of it. And I would love to put some teeths back into it to make it actually more effective rather than so performative. And I would, and this is more in reference into like the 2019 decision. I think there is definitely a lot of bias and blinders when the majority of the people who sit on city councils across the region are homeowners or landlords themselves. Very rarely do we have a renter who is able to be here and make these policy decisions with that experience. And so saying all of that, I really would love to see us increase some of these and like go from, I think you said it really well, and I'm trying to find the wording in my notes here, from something that's more operational to an inspection base. That seems that, I'm getting the impression, and I'm wondering if I'm correct here, that that would be more effective, that we could do a lot more with this program than what we're doing.
I mean, in a myriad of ways, if we were fully staffed and launched what I think was approved in getting that into a full functioning form. I think that would also be an enormous amount of feedback there in terms of its effectiveness, I think, because it's not in its full form.
Right.
You know, we have a difficulty time proving and demonstrating to council that this is it. This is what works and what doesn't work, because I know we're a bit anemic in some areas. And I acknowledge on EHHS side that part of that is our staffing at the moment. But in terms of beyond that, I do know there is an exhaustive amount of effort. You know, CED did a lot to come back and to continue to refine that at council's approval. You know, council will kind of set that tone in terms of the expectations of continue to revise. So I mean, really what we were here today is to continue in picking up on a conversation that started pre-COVID and looking at how much our landscape has changed and giving us an opportunity again to acknowledge our component in peace and where we could do better ourselves.
No, totally. Actually, this was interesting because this was brought up to me by a landlord after the February meeting where I motioned that we do this gap analysis and we explore this. With the landlord was like, well, why don't we do more with the rental registration program? We had an amazing long coffee and a lot of what you have presented here, that landlord actually explained to me months ago. So as being one of the greener people on this council, what would be our next steps? And I'm just going to ask like in terms of like putting some of the teeths back in.
I'm going to say the answer is fund more positions.
Okay.
But I think that ties into my question as far as more discussion. I mean, this is the, to have more discussion about all of this, this stuff. There is some good stuff in there, there's lots of good stuff in it, whatever. I mean, and we have to parse out exactly what makes the most sense for Renton. I'm not concerned with what any other cities have done. What makes the most sense for Renton, you know, and in our situation.
Councilmember Rivera, we certainly can follow up on the request and questions that other councilmembers and you have asked. We can provide that and then I think council can continue to digest and I think fine tune what is specifically valuable to our community.
Number one, and we are five minutes away from deadline, so.
Thank you, Madam President. So in terms, I know you answered Councilmember Prince's question earlier through the presentation. But in terms of the timeline, I know you can't really give exact timelines because this was initiated before the pandemic and then pandemic and so forth. Kind of a guesstimate or estimate of generally, not to say full vision of this program, but just in terms of that, as we look back prior to the pandemic, what was the timeline within a year or so? How can we, you know, how do you see the timeline is now? And then, of course, the support that's needed from council, if you're able to speak to that.
We thank council completely for the support and patience on the development and execution of EHHS as it gets born into what it is and what it hopes to be. Hannah's position and her prior position is our priority. We do have other docket items that we know are waiting to be filled and funded, but her position is the priority. So I would say in the next three to six months is our goal to define and refine. That's not to say we're not currently supporting the program within other means and staff creatively within our department, but I think to really invest the time and execute and turn on all the lights and switches, so to say, would require a person dedicated to the program, which we do have currently designed. It does need a little bit refinement since it came over from Community and Economic Development, which is, they're also a huge partner in the execution of the program as well as finance. So it does take all three of our departments to work together cohesively to make this of value.
Okay, and I think you've gotten a little taste of what might come out of the Community Services Committee. In any case, any other further questions? And I want to say thank you very much. It was very thorough, very thorough. There's a lot of information there and you guys are always just, I'm always impressed, never surprised by the quality of the work that you guys do. So thank you, thank you. And Roger?